...the flag of the United States of America, hand to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah.
Yep, it does.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Carry.
Approve the minutes of nine sixteen.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as permitted, looks correct to me.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Carry.
General public concerns.
Fellas, I got a few questions about, you know, our sub five eleven up there. Some of the stuff that's stayed in place, like taking the Davis Farm out of this, half of it out, I don't agree with that. I think that's against the law. I think Rick Hopper's just, uh, I don't know where he's going with that, I don't understand it. I don't think legally he can do that, but he's done it. I, I don't agree, he says we've got forty-four thousand dollars interest against this project. He doesn't even know the cost of it yet. How can he figure all this stuff? I don't get it. I don't know where we're going with this. And he sat here that day and told us that he had somebody on site every day that they were working up there. That's not true either. So, I, I just have a lot of problems with this and, uh, we're gonna file an objection to them withdraw on that. I, I don't know if I'm out of control here or what is, but I just, we knew when we went into this where everybody stood. And then that's all done and now that things are changing. You guys see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I just don't think that's right and, uh, I'm gonna file an objection and I think there's more objections gonna come in now too, the way it sounds. So, and I just have problems with what's going on here. You know what? The project was a great project, it was done really good, I, I just wish the engineering was done as good as the project itself because he designed that whole project to never put one intake on that big tile, it's not perforated tile, how can that water get in it if you don't have intakes or perforated tile? That's not right. And then here comes this added expense to that. You, that's, I just don't think it's, it could've been engineered a lot better than it was. That's my bottom line.
I agree with you on the intakes. The, uh, that's something, I think when you put more mains and we need to put more surface intakes in, right on the mains.
Yeah. But I mean, you put a forty-eight inch tile in there, you don't have any way for the water to get in it, other than up the old tile to it, that's not right.
I think a lot of the reasons they don't put, engineer the intakes in is to try and keep surface water out of the intakes for pollutants reasons.
Yep.
That's why they're, you know, 'cause that's the way they're told to do it.
Mm-hmm.
By the EPA and things like that.
But weren't we at one time told if we did intakes around, that we were gonna have some type of buffer, grass strips to help filter?
Yeah.
I mean, they haven't done, nothing's... Of course, that's just farm ground that gets taken out if you, and nobody likes to farm around.
Yeah, but, you know, there, there's a lot of rules kind of from a government like that that we're gonna have to endure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, we understand your questions and I guess all we can do is work through it.
Yeah.
Like you said, it was done, we all appreciated the way it was done, they did a good job with the tile.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I, I, that's my concerns, fellas, and that's all I have here today, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I agree too, so.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Anybody else on general public concerns?
I'm in Watson, I just had a big incident. It goes on here.
Seven display.
Make it behave. There you go.
Okay, uh, County Supervisor Dave Lee, approve the Board of Adjustment recommendations for a car lot. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, with the gentleman and he wants to build, or restore, not restore, sell cars. He said maybe ten at the maximum, they'd be most of them in the building, uh, minor repair on them, but he says all his mechanic work is done in here in town and all he wants to do is sell them. And, uh, it's out, um, clear out on, uh, what's the address, fifteen thirty-nine two-hundred-and-thirtieth Street.
Is Randy still sitting up there?
No, he left. He was, he had a question for me. On it, on another subject. But, uh, he, he applied, if you wanna see the buildings, he's gonna work back here at these two buildings. Uh, it's clear out, anybody wants to see that. We approved it on the Board of Adjustment and, uh, he's, he's not gonna do any body work, anything like that, just light mechanic work or polish them up, detail them, put them out for sale.
And he set them out by the road then, or?
No, he's all internet.
Oh.
He's gonna go over, over the internet and sell them.
Okay.
And he's buying pre-used or pre-owned vehicles and selling them back out. I told him I'd represent him this morning.
So this has nothing to do with the junkyard?
No, junkyard.
No scrapping, no?
It's just this one location, Dave?
This is just the one location. The guy with the junkyard hasn't come back yet, we set some stipulations in setting the rules for it and, uh, he hasn't come back. He was from Fort Dodge, this guy owns the property, he bought it about nineteen to ten months ago, so, and, uh, farm ground around him, but, uh, he just, he just wants to sell cars.
But like Brett said, if he's gonna end up with a multitude of cars out?
That's what I was wondering. You know, all along the, right away?
Yeah, he's not gonna have anything out by the road, in fact, he's already poured rock back in there and...
They have them back there.
They're gonna be back behind the buildings.
Okay.
He's gonna use them two buildings to store them and work them up. But he said all of his sales, uh, he, I asked him about parking them out there and having junk cars sitting around, he said no. He said all he wants to do is polish them up, clean them up, and if there's anything wrong with them, he brings them into a mechanic in town, he takes them back out and cleans them up and puts them on the internet for sale.
But obviously, we looked through the Board of Adjustment, we looked through the Board of Adjustment the other night and we approved it.
Yeah.
So we need to move it here.
Yes.
And I, I read this email too, that, I don't know if he sent it or Randy sent it.
Randy sent it.
Randy sent it.
He was...
Uh, I don't know, I don't see a problem with this one. I guess that's why I wanted to clarify, there's no correlation with any of the other junkyards.
No, no.
Okay.
The junkyard guy from Fort Dodge, we told him what he needed to do and he has not come back to fight.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, both, uh, Board of Adjustments recommendations for the used car lot. I guess that's what you'd call it.
Well, hopefully not even used car lot, but...
No, it's used car sales.
Used car sales.
He said he wouldn't have more than ten out there at the time and he said two to ten-year-old cars is what his goal is to fix them up and have them.
Well, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Carry.
We did get some calls and concerns about the junkyard and that's what Randy talked to me this morning about and he hasn't come back with any of them. And we see there's a tire shop out on the corner of three and Rutland intersection and, uh, I brought that to Randy's attention, he's gonna check into it, the guy hasn't been in, applied for any variance on that.
Tire shop?
Yeah, he got a great, four-by-eight sign out there, it says something, something tires, tire shop, shop, or tires and repair.
Hmm, okay, I'm not real familiar with that.
You must have looked that up.
Yeah, I just put it up last week.
But he didn't go through the DOT for...
Didn't go through anybody that I know of and he should've got a variance on it, so Randy checking into that for us.
Did it, Mr. Dog?
Yeah, same place, that garage that sits back there, I suppose he's using, but, it's a tire shop, the tires, there's a name on top of the board, looks like two four-by-fours and a great big sheet of plywood up there with the painting on it, it says tires and repair, I think it says on it.
I'll be...
Hmm.
We haven't heard anything on that, so.
This is...
Maybe. Okay, Ben, you're up, you're in a minute, two minutes early.
Do the claim quick.
Yeah, do your claims right quick. Come on up anyway.
I had, I looked through, I had two hundred and, for general, two fifty-four, four-four, three point eleven and twenty-nine, twenty, point twenty-eight per drainage. I would make that motion to approve. The only thing I would, well, I'll subway for a second and then I'll ask Ben, Vinzey's in to see.
I'll sec, oh, go ahead, Rick. I'll second that.
All right, I see you got your large tire, tire orders, that for patrol, is that for trucks? But we got tires for ever? You got a good discount, 'cause I need some truck tires.
We got a good discount, I don't know that we got tires forever, it seems like, uh, that's one of our more expensive constant purchases.
Things always seem to wear out.
We, uh, we purchased basically two full sets of rears for dump trucks, we put one full set on a truck in Hardy and we put a half set on Mike White's truck in Humboldt. We did the changing ourselves, so we saved a hundred bucks a tire, changing them ourselves. The guys over at Hardy have the tools for it, uh, so we just sent Mike over there for a half day and got them all changed. Um, and the other purchase was, I believe, twelve motor grade tires. Uh, typically what we do is we'll put them in our block building in Dakota City and let them age for about a year to harden up. Our operators seem to think that they get better use of, better wear of the tires once they...
They come pretty fresh.
They come pretty fresh and soft and with our limestone roads, they get, not a bad idea.
Well, it hurts, I'm sure, to order that volume, but...
Right.
But the, the greater tires are the cheapest price that we've had in five, six years. Well, that's good, Bill.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Okay, now, Ben.
Okay. Uh, on the agenda today, I've got, uh, five different routes to approve for, uh, changing to a no snow removal road. Uh, we, uh, we look at our system every couple of years and talk to our blade operators and then talk to our schools to make sure that we're not interfering with those routes and, uh, this year, basically, these are the, the five routes that, that we've come up with where the acreages have been torn down and there's nothing on the stretch of road anymore, low volume. Uh, the first road is one hundred and fiftieth street between Q Avenue and Queen Avenue. Do I have to do these individ, do these individually?
You can do them all at once if you want to, but that's...
And then we can just open it up for discussion.
I have a question.
Hold on.
Yeah, that's a part of the...
Are these new?
These will be new.
These are not, uh, these are not posted yet.
So, the ones that are highlighted are the new ones on the map, there's five of them that are highlighted. And if you look on, uh, your second sheet in details...
Right.
All of the routes. Uh, but yeah, there's, there's five routes that are highlighted. Uh, like I said, I, I talked to my blade operators to see which routes they thought they could get rid of. Um, twenty-five is one hundred and fiftieth street between Q and Queen Avenue, twenty-six is Pine Avenue between one hundred and seventieth street and one hundred and eightieth street, twenty-seven is two hundred and sixtieth street between Texas and Utah, twenty-eight is down on the county line on two hundred and eightieth street between Xenia and New York Avenue, and twenty-nine is a three-quarter mile stretch of Hawaii Avenue, basically from the address twenty-seven thirty-seven south to the county line.
Yeah, 'cause Webster...
Western County switched theirs to a no snow removal already, so we're following suit, basically cleaning to the acreage and turning around and going back.
Okay. What's, uh, what about Pine Avenue?
Pine Avenue is just south of, uh, C twenty-six, there used to be an acreage there, now there's a, uh, an old block silo, is the only thing that remains from the acreage, it's a one-mile stretch.
Dead end there?
It tees, it tees at both ends.
Yeah. So, this shouldn't interfere with the traveling public by any stretch then?
No, I, I think probably the only person that would use that road would be Denny Williams, where he can go straight west to the...
And like there's a city that has livestock where they have to drive an extra round.
Right.
Okay. I'll make a motion for the close for snow, no snow removal routes to be added of, number twenty-five.
Can we do this in public hearing?
That's right.
I don't think it's an official public hearing, we didn't have a...
Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I was gonna do that, but I felt, I was thinking the public...
To do a no, to do a no snow removal, I don't think you're required to do a public hearing, we're just, we wanted to give, uh, a set date and time in case anybody had any objections.
Any objections?
No, it's listed as a public hearing, so maybe we should. Go ahead, Bruce.
Well, I, I think that it would probably be the easiest, but if we didn't advertise it, I don't want...
Well, not official then.
Yeah.
It's more...
It's kind of a, you know, not full-blown public hearing, but a...
It's what, it's what we tried to call full disclosure to the public.
I think I talked about it and he said he looked back and it was...
And we've never done a public hearing.
It's never been a public hearing. It's just that you need to come and present any routes.
Yeah.
But it's more just a hearing.
Probably just more of a public information.
Right.
Then I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept it.
Where are you at, Peterson?
All right, then I'll second his motion.
Make a motion to accept it.
That way we can get to this part of, I have one question.
Okay.
On any of these things that say, I don't have a clue if any of them have like a bin site out there and farmers seem to be, um, storing their bin base as much as they can with the corn and bean prices, you know? If they have bin site out there and this was on one of them sites...
Middle of February, you wanted to...
Yeah, all of a sudden they had their corn sold to Valero or to an elevator, how did it, did they just get ahold of you and say, hey, I got twenty-five thousand bushel of corn, I need to move out of there? Sorry? Or what's the, what's our response?
Uh, they can, typically, we look for places that don't even have a bin site.
That's what I wondered if we did a little detail.
I'm pretty sure they're not storing grain in that old block.
I didn't figure that, but...
That's a good question, though, just if there's something that was missed, which that's why I asked, I said, impact anything, that's what Bruce is saying.
I just, you know, I, I've been on those in the truck part where...
You can't get there.
You can't get down there, I'm not taking my truck out in there.
I suppose if we were given enough advance notice, we could get in there to move this...
I don't wanna put you on the spot and say we're out moving snow on a no snow, snow removal.
We, we've never had it before, um, like I said, we, we try to look for places that don't have anything on it.
That's a good theory. So, yeah, you, this has been checked out to where it isn't, what Bruce is saying.
But in the event that a, a, a building does go up on our existing, you know, we would have to drop it off and revisit our, our list.
You have the ability to take these off this list too, any of them listed.
Right.
If something would happen and...
The, the typical thing that crops up is hog facility. They see a no snow removal route, they know that they can almost always automatically meet their, uh...
Setbacks.
Their setbacks and, and their distances from any houses, 'cause there's nothing on that road.
Right. Well, let's hope not there, but if someone would happen to on one of these routes, not the new ones, but even the existing ones, purchased ground and built a fifty thousand bushel bin there, well, they'd have to, I'm sure that we...
They would come to the board.
Could and would make an allowance for what Bruce mentioned on that sites in River State.
I just had that question, that's all I have.
The one that comes to mind is the one that they put up, up on, uh, Nowhere Road, east of Livermore, um, it'd be north and east of Brent Fols set up, um...
Is that, that up there, or?
No, they put a hog facility on one hundred and thirtieth, just west of Rose Avenue, and that was a no snow removal, five vehicle a day road and now it's, now it's got a hog set up and that's part of the second thing, I guess, that I've got.
Okay.
Well, with your approval, if I, when I word the motion, I'll say approve, um, no snow removal route that's recommended by the county engineer and the local, is that all right?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
That's in the public record.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Motion to approve.
Got it. All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Carry. The second item that I've got on the agenda is for that exact hog facility, um, is to install a culvert under the road so that they can run an umbilical through it to be able to pump manure. This is, uh, to approve an application for construction of the county's right of way to Scott Jacobson, uh, Summit Agricultural Group, uh, he's requesting that the county install a, a fifteen-inch, he's got listed here an eighteen-inch, but I talked to him on the phone and he'd be fine with a fifteen-inch, uh, culvert under one hundred and thirtieth street to be able to pump manure from that hog facility to the north side of the road.
Okay.
Well, in my opinion, every time we have the ability to do that and not have tanks running up and down the road, tannery, gravel up...
Right.
It's a win-win for us.
And then to go with that, um, the more I started looking at, at this, I'll put this on the agenda for next week, um, but it's, uh, enacting an official policy for Humboldt County on how we deal with these. Um, basically, it's, it's modeled after, uh, Western County's policy of Rejude Webster and the Sioux Counties as far as how they handle these, uh, manure crossings. Um, Webster County has quite a bit more detail to it than, than Humboldt, or than, uh, Sioux County does, uh, it just more or less lists the steps and, and tells the property owner or the applicant what all he has to provide. But I'll put this on the agenda for, for next week.
So Ben, do they, do they sit like on the, the ground level or are they up on the road a little bit where there isn't?
They're up higher.
So we don't have water?
Typically, we try and put them six to twelve inches higher than the flow line, that way it's not, uh, it's not full of water and, and doesn't carry the water usually.
They get silted shut?
Yes, like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that way we're not as worried about trying to clean the thing up.
Right.
Plus, if there is a leak of some sort, it's not getting into a water source and traveling.
Get something across the road and do it somewhere else?
Right.
I, I like that, good idea.
But, uh, uh, I guess what I'm looking for on this is a, is a motion to approve the application for Scott Jacobson, uh, assuming we get a copy of his insurance.
Okay. Any questions with your, your, yeah, policy? We don't have one?
We do not have a policy as far as how we handle these. We typically only get one, maybe two a year, I mean, I dug back in the file and basically...
Not a big thing, that.
No, in the past ten years, I think we've had four of them.
Okay.
So, but I, I, as we get more and more hog facilities, I see more and more operators wanting to install these crosspipes, which, like you said, is a benefit to the county to not have those...
Yeah, big tanks.
Big tanks running up and down the road.
But this just falls out.
I'm just giving that to you in advance of next week so that you have a chance to review it and if there's anything you'd like to...
Yep. Which I think is a good idea to have.
Right.
Now, this crosspipe doesn't get any pay, pay back?
No. No, this crosspipe doesn't get any, any kind of reimbursement.
They just have their, from that, to their side, it's their expense, right? And you keep an eye on the...
And then we maintain the pipe after it's installed.
You check on the installation or it's mine?
Uh, the way we've got it right now is we do the installation...
Oh, you do it.
To ensure that it is done correctly.
Okay.
And, and done at the right elevation as opposed to taking it all over.
And it's fifteen-inch concrete, right?
Uh, fifteen-inch steel.
Steel, okay.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to approve that right of way for Summit Ag or Scott Jacobson.
I'll sec, I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Now, we install that, but he gets billed back for the time spent.
He gets billed back for time and material.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry.
And I do wanna make you guys aware of it, our new concrete that runs between Bode and Rutland has about six cracks through it, where some concrete's starting to pop out. Talked to my contractor, I've talked to the DOT, I've talked to Concrete Paving Association and they're setting up a meeting for roughly two weeks from now to figure out.
Is it done at the bottom where we wondered if it's a border, is it up towards the top?
Down at the bottom, not in the thin area that we were looking at, but it was on the last day's run, um, basically where we struggled, finished today.
You noticed that? You guys are operator or?
Our, uh, one of our maintenance operators from Bode saw it. Basically, that last day that we had, we had a couple of micro cracks that Saw crews noticed and when the contractor went out and reviewed it, basi, basically, they thought they could fix the problem by putting this oxy caulk into the joint. So we caulked these joints and basically it's falling on either side of the crack, so, just to make you guys aware of it. We still have roughly a hundred thousand in retainage between the two jobs that we can pull against them, plus we've got a bond for the construction.
I don't have experience with bonds, it's a joke.
Really?
Yeah, extremely joke, joke, joke. But the retainage is not.
But the retainage is not.
This would be equivalent to, um, doing your kitchen floor in tile and it cracks and it's not that big a deal to the guy, but the woman has a bit when she sees that it's got a crack in it, that's kinda the big deal.
Well, the most of the sun flows off the crack.
I would, if, if that's the case, then I guess I'm, I'm the woman because I'm...
I, I know, we haven't even hardly got anything on this thing and it's already cracked.
We haven't had a pre-staw, we haven't had a winter yet.
Yeah, that's a...
That's the scary part.
This, yeah, all it is, well, I mean, it's also a lot scary 'cause you said it was the last day.
It's, it's the last day, so it's in, it's in the last mile and, uh, it's, it's between six and twelve locations, I can't remember exactly how many, we put this caulk in for the micro crack and then, like I said, it's just starting to chip away on either side of it and there's two of them that have pretty decent spots that are missing concrete right now, so...
Now the time to fix this remedy, and now the time for meetings are about figuring out the solution.
Right, so, so we're setting up a meeting, I think, for the, to the first or second week in October, for everybody to come together, the DOT, Concrete Paving Association, contractor and us.
Perfect.
But my guess is if, if they come in and fix it, it'll be next season, because Manats already, Manats already has the job in Pocahontas County for next year.
Oh, that's...
So they'll have to, they'll have the plant set up and give them a city again, so they'll have the curbs here and everything.
Good.
My hope is they just say, hey, we'll come back, we'll prepare all these locations, yep.
Yes.
Well, that way we've got time to have that pre-staw and see if anything else lost and...
Exactly, we can see what else fails between now.
Time, yeah. Well, this is good news, but I guess it's better than before.
Well, I think timing is better now than two years ago, for, for leverage.
Yep, because we've only made it three months.
Right, yeah. But I know you'll keep us informed when you have that meeting for the month. Anything else for me?
Thank you for the weather and the front burner, it's kind of.
Yeah, it's nice, we're, uh, we're flipping away on driveways and tile repairs, so keep going.
Thank you.
Okay. There's a little. Mm-hmm, number eighteen. Discussion on engineering, what's that all about?
Don't know.
Does it drainage say, do you want a drainage?
A little, a little, actually, do you need to do some?
But also you can get a, fill off our committee records and.
Well, officially, this past Monday, on the sixteenth, I had an LEC meeting that morning. Also, then on Friday, the twentieth, I had a second judicial district meeting in Webster City. Friday morning. Went quite well as far as second judicial district meetings go. And that was my two meetings for the past week.
Okay, I also had the LEC meeting on Monday morning. And then, uh, Tuesday afternoon, I went and met with Andy Lemonis about, uh, right of way for thirty-five, E thirty-five for growing that tree. So he's getting a right of way agreement written out, did you meet with Andy Lemonis?
And that is?
A lawyer.
And Blue.
Dan Blue.
Oh, good.
And so.
Good. Put something together for that.
And I could see him, so.
Good idea, thank you.
Getting that process started, and when I did the, there's actually only about six landowners that are actually going to be.
Going to be involved.
Physically impacted by this. So he's going to make up a letter for each of them and tell us what we're going to do and what we're supposed to maintain in the future.
Perfect.
Good work. I'm glad that wasn't done about ten years ago.
Yeah.
But, uh, do you want it now?
Yep. So he'll, he'll bring the, the letter up to the board for approval before we mail it out.
Excellent, excellent.
I had a ministerial meeting on Tuesday, which I was going to do by phone, which I didn't get through. So the ministers were on their own. Everything went good according to the report I got, so that was all mine.
Okay, on Wednesday, got a call up on Xenia and one hundred and thirtieth. And, uh, one of the contractors drove across, she said it was her yard, but it's at the end of the lane in the grass area. And he left tracks, and she highly thought, her husband talked to him, he said, it was Peterson, he said, I'll bring some dirt back and fill it again when we're done. But they, he had to get down to the, like, ravine or the cr- creek down there. And, uh, I took some pictures of it. Anyway, he said he would take care of it, and they called the law on it, because they didn't figure I was doing anything on it. So I hadn't got back to her yet, and I was talking to Peterson and Trish. Anyway, the law called and said they was going up there to look at it, and I says, you don't need to, I'm already taking care of it. But, uh, we got it straightened out, I guess. There's the tracks that he left in the.
What's Peterson, isn't it?
What do you mean, what is, what is the one sitting here?
What's the best of the world?
Is there any more than this day? Day, there's a lot of this. Yeah, there's got one more.
What is that for me?
You're planning, you talked to him, you're planning on putting some dirt back in.
But we told him that he was there when we unloaded. But then next day, we got a visit from the sheriff, so now I'm kind of real tentative, what do I do?
When you get done going in and out, and I told him that you wouldn't be going out.
I'll never go out, in or out again there.
Yeah, that's what I told him, I said, you're following the.
But I mean, it involves driving a backhoe on a little bit of your yard.
Yeah, you couldn't have come down that ditch.
I, I got nowhere else up well, other than I go a mile up the ditch and then track all the way down. And I grabbed the closest driveway and, as careful as we could be.
And that drive's not messed up. It's just a little grass there, and you talked to him, and I said, your hayfield's going to come back up.
And he'd have blowout, tile blowout in that hayfield. I'd give Trish, she was going to make up an order on it. Yeah, I tried to be nice to him.
Are we going to get down to that?
Yeah, so I talked to him and he was fine with, if you put some dirt back in three cracks in the yard and throw some grass seed on it.
You think I should do it that way?
Yeah, I talked to him and told him that's what we would do when, in the, he said.
See the egregious.
He's, he's going to answer. And he said, well, what's he going to do about the fence down there? And I says, well, if there's a fence there, he'll have to cut it and go through it and put it back up.
We were over the top of it, you can kind of call it a fence, but.
I would take pictures of those before.
Travis already found it.
I'm sure.
You, you just never know what's expected.
You're right.
Yeah, I talked to him privately, he was fine.
Always wants to, it was the next day, the, the sheriff, I thought.
Yeah, he, I come in and talked to Trish and, well, I took pictures of it that same day. The next day I get the call that the sheriff's on the way. I called Dean, paid me, didn't have to. Anyway, the guy's, right now, he's happy if you just put some dirt in it and then see it.
We'll get that done.
Thank you.
Oh, you're right, no, I.
You didn't know that.
It just, I just, the creative person's my, thanks to you guys, well, you, you get to deal with.
You just didn't, you just didn't know that, uh, you know, trying to do contract work was that rough.
Yeah, it's, it's, you just can't be sensitive enough to other people's property, I'll just.
That's right. And it's just, it's a small percentage, but you get that percentage and that's sometimes what happens.
Sometimes driving a vinyl out of the way, it's not that big a deal.
Well, but it's just personal, yeah.
But you got, you crop damage on one hand or thirty feet on his lawn?
Thirty, yeah, I'm sure that, perhaps, and you never know this, because I said that, that percentage of people would say, hey, we got off when it dries up and throws some grass seed, or they'd be just swimming to your attention. But perhaps always the best thing is checking with landowners previous to.
I always liked the idea that you unloaded the machine because you're going to fix something, and you'll usually fix what has been required and it's pretty easy.
We're there to help.
You're there to help, yeah.
Yeah, you're not there to create, but yeah, it's, and it's tough, you know.
You gotta get along.
Yeah, they didn't know you was coming in and they've talked about it, so.
It's.
Now, it's all smoothed over now, as long as you put some dirt in there and smooth it out.
Yeah, and it, yeah, we'll do that, we don't want that that day, and the next day, the sheriff goes and washes.
Yeah, I got a call up, so I went up and looked at it, took some pictures. The only way you could get in there, you couldn't have went over that ditch.
No way, but I'd still be stuck in the ditch.
Yeah, yeah, there's no way you could have went over it, so. That's all taken care of.
Thank you, Dave.
You bet. Okay, on Wednesday then, I went ahead and had a minus meeting in the afternoon for Dodge. Thursday, had a board of adjustment meeting up here. And a Doug House meeting, Elder meeting at Humboldt.
What is the status on that? Are they going to try to get that thing up and moving before fall?
We are continuing on with it, uh, we approved to go ahead and build. The price now is a hundred and, or two hundred and forty-two thousand. He jumped up ten thousand from what he had bid, but he didn't have all these bids in. They still don't have them all in, but he said that's real close to where it's going to be, so.
But we're still thinking that by winter?
Well, last we talked to Jim, he said he thought he would have it built and ready to go the end of February. But we don't know where he's at right now, so. That's it on that. They're going to have a fundraiser, try to raise, I forget what, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, fifty thousand, I think it was, to break ground. And we're applying for that money from USDA. Ten-year building, you would, you was there that meeting, we talked about that, yeah, we're applying for that. Shouldn't nobody on the open meeting.
True, true, economic development.
Yeah.
Economic development.
No, it's through the, it's through the USDA or whatever that one is.
Oh, again, it's USDA.
Two percent, that's what we're on track for, so. Okay. DD eighteen, want to make a motion going to drainage?
Sure.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Gary.
Uh, Rick, this is a motion. Agenda, I think it doesn't need, but I got like a question for you.
You bet.
Yeah, and I think I talked to you in the office, uh, that you guys were doing what you could over there by Bradgate.
Oh, yes, sir.
You know, and found out where that tile outlet is more or less into a bayou. And the bayou does eventually drain over the river, and, you know, we know, speaking of, you can't even get there with a machine.
I'd love to.
It just won't work, but I got to ask you, did you feel that the tannite trying to blow a little bit? Was, I mean, granted, that's not big, but that was semi effective, but.
I got, I got opening, say, two foot, uh, two foot deep. In fact, I just, I really, but you're looking at a, at a waterway that's a quarter mile away now.
Right, what's the maximum, maximum length that needs to be?
Well, look.
Read from where it's kind of latched up to where.
Four hundred feet of the sandbar. I, I'm guessing, because a lot of it's underwater and it's so flat, you know, you drop it six inches, well, you might go up to a hundred feet. It's just sand everywhere and that's a swamp.
I didn't want to force you to talk, but you use it.
No, the tile outlet is, water's over the top.
Yeah, every time I look at it, it's underwater.
So I go downstream before it gets to the Des Moines River, and the sandbar is holding it all back.
Well, it's holding the water back.
Because it doesn't dump into the river.
It dumps into a bayou, more or less, whatever you want to call it.
What's the theory?
Bayou. So then there's a sandbar that keeps the bayous full of water, is what you're saying?
Yes, the sandbar even in the Des Moines, what's the one river and that tile outlet?
And the sandbar, it's all to be back, right?
Well, that's the thing, even if I tug it out, the next big thing.
The next rain pushed that sand right back into, probably into the same area.
And I told Jason, it would be nice if I could get a pathway to it, so maybe every year, every other year, you go down and just dip it out.
Just open it up.
Yeah, but it's a big top there.
Get, it can, it does get to the river.
The minute it starts, won't tree runs.
But it doesn't really have a lot of water.
Yeah, I can get rid of the water before I can deal with any tree problems. But yeah, I don't know, if, I mentioned Trish, maybe you got a good cold winter.
Didn't relax, I was saying. I mentioned, I don't want to jinx anything, but the reason I mentioned your little explosive experiment, uh, I have been in contact with the explosive, explosive expert, and this is in the middle of nowhere.
Yes, we got, we got Hyundai TV stuff getting to it.
I have mentioned him about, they have, well, they blew a hole to make the panel walk now. Explosives will blow holes. We're going to, we're going to look into that, does anyone have an objection with that? If you'll do it?
Call. I want, I want to watch, call.
Yeah, we have to, you don't have it. You just don't have a accessible location here.
Dallas was down.
Yeah, doing research?
Yeah, researching cleaning out the river north of here.
Yes.
Just away, so.
There's a petition being filed in Palo Alto County to clean out their DD eighty-one, and that comes all the way down to Pocahontas County, which then goes only quarter of a mile and it gets into Pocahontas County. So we're also researching joint Palo Alto, Pocahontas, Humboldt, one. Um, for history and what's been done. Because that petition, the Palo Alto Board hasn't really taken, taken action on the petition, but it could mean more water getting here faster. Just another.
And so depending on if you can clean that out.
Yes.
Maybe that'll.
Could be carried further, yes. That's what I'm hoping, if they actually can get a permission, supposedly it was cleaned out and straightened in the nineteen fifties in Palo Alto County. Yeah, and they established the drainage history, eighty-eighty-one in Palo Alto County, so. Well, in the next few weeks, we'll have a history that we can get to you, so you can read up on it too. But yeah, Jason was telling me about the sandbar and what he'd seen, about the right of, or whatever. You planted some, I can't remember.
We use tannery.
Okay.
And, and you back it in a water bottle, and they're just about two feet apart, and you shoot it with an AR fifteen, because of the velocity setting.
Et cetera, okay.
When I move the shovel and kind of back. Those pictures, I walked through that two weeks before a two-inch rain, and then that is two-inch rain, now you can see all the water again. I was going to go back and take a picture of what we, the trench of tannery, and see if the water, it kind of flushed things out. I can't even get to it after two inches of rain. But where it used to go straight to the river, now it's trying to, it's trying to make a new path, and water is just basically doing whatever.
That's been a.
The problem is it just, it doesn't outlet. It outlets into a puddle.
Underwater.
Yeah, always.
Every, every time I went up there, it's two, three feet underwater.
And that was, it was dry, you were burying all year, and you guys went down there.
And I couldn't, I saw that fence is opening and the dock is a dino. I mean, ideally, take it down fifteen hundred feet, extend the tile right to the Des Moines River. But then again, how do you, how do you, how do you do that?
Yeah, in a swamp.
Yeah. Do like the old days, get a barge, put your excavator on a barge. Float it. Float it out there, that's what they did back then.
Yeah, so, just so you know, and I don't want to jinx this, because I'm really looking forward to blowing a channel there, somebody will lie to you.
Young Yaman was a reliable, he'd be interested to, he loved working with explosives.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I said, that, that gave me to put the thought in my head, which is a dangerous thing to do, but.
Buster, go put him and back, take him where we found him, but.
I've, but all been put in, and, uh, we may be researching this as early as next week.
So what do we got going here then?
DD eighteen, discussion on engineering.
Yeah, I am not really familiar.
Yaman told me it was, it, that maybe we're still asking for some more engineering or something related to PD eighteen.
Maybe just get a couple of elevations so we can put up, it's so flat. And I was just on, on this ditch in twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
And the farmer kind of asked me, did I have elevations, what I used, I said, I do, like, I always do, try to find bottom, get different elevators, and there were one deeper, and I'm just.
I didn't want to make sure you're not over digging.
I go over dig, and then the water goes the wrong way.
Yeah, well, we can absolutely stake it very easily, we've been down, we've marked where the bridge abutments are that have to come out, where the Beaver Dam is. And we've been entered enough to know that below the Beaver Dam, there's hardly any silt left there, but above it, they're estimating a foot of silt.
So, I mean, twenty fifteen, you were in there, Rick?
Yes, sir.
And we have.
What, it's just spot clean then, or what do we do in twenty fifteen?
It was a full, full clean, but there was no engineering.
Right, it would just go to hard bottom. But that was, did you go past that Y?
Yes.
You did.
I went all the way up to the bulkhead where, uh, Mr. Scharder farms, I believe.
Twenty fifteen?
It was pretty rough, August the twentieth, I just looked at home, and that's when I built it out.
So I'm, I'm right.
Did you go all the way to the, where it actually ends?
Somewhere where we invited.
Not the real contentious spot, it was. Not the real contentious spot, as we said. Only.
It's up in the middle of a field.
Yep.
Couple lanes come in there.
And you went all the way to that area?
All the way to the standing corn. I know it well, 'cause when I get up there, I had no way out of the field, so I tracked back through my spoiler pile. And it's down the bank, got stuck.
Well, we don't want to do that again, but.
I'll, I'll run over corn next time, but that's, that's why it's pretty, it's pretty my own.
Yeah, but that is just, that upper end is the problem. I know it's humongous elevation, that's a huge long way, goes into your favorite area.
Yeah.
But.
It's really flat. I mean, we have elevations, I mean, no more than a day's work, and we could have it all staked.
Didn't you, and you didn't stake it in the two thousand?
No, just basically my target bottom.
And that's kind of your request?
Well, being I'm going back so quick, maybe we ought to go.
I think so.
Why do it the same?
Right, let's have a little more scientific proof.
Yes, I think Beaver Dam's been about.
Are we gonna get, what, five years out of it again? Are we, I mean, that's, my question is, is what, what is our alternative?
If you're out there, look for anything that's bringing extra silt in. If we can stop the siltation of it, that'll prolong the life of the cleanup.
Absolutely.
So we're gonna, gotta take observation as to.
That's the other key. Get the Beaver Dam out and keep it out.
Well, better get me the specific location of the Beaver Dam, 'cause if it's still there, then there's still beavers there.
I hear about them, I haven't seen one yet, other than, I've heard they're down in that Tor Highway seventeen, and that drainage district ends before you get cleared down.
Right, no.
Yeah.
But as you go off, where we know it's, yeah, further north.
I drove by there yesterday, and that water's down pretty good, but, but down by this gentleman's lawn that I drove across, that water is deep.
Yeah, it's, it's running. They would take that in there if you didn't see it.
Over in the swamp, there's some beavers.
Oh, we know that, remember, how many times have we discussed this?
Yeah.
That's getting back to your cleaning out, quote un, that's natural.
Yeah.
But then you don't really normally clear beavers, including the beavers.
Well, when you get to it, it's running, and say, hey, you know, 'cause, yeah, we want them cleaned out as soon as possible, but most of these locations, if there's an active dam, there's active beavers, and as soon as you get a mile of the stream.
As soon as you leave, they're putting it back.
You'll be going back and cleaning it out before you're done with that project. But, and that may be fine, too, but we gotta get rid of the beavers.
Yeah.
Just wanna mention that explosives also are very effective method.
And I, I'll make a motion to hire Jacobson West Guard to stake the elevation on the upper end cleanout of DD eighteen.
And we certainly don't need every hundred feet, no, and I, that's good, but, yeah, thousands of feet.
Every thousand.
Five hundred.
This gives you some of a benchmark to follow on.
We will put the laser on our machine if we have stakes, and.
Good.
'Cause you have, you have the grade on this, what the slope is supposed to be?
Yeah, we have all that.
Let us know, and then we'll put that in our laser.
I'll second it, but my question still is, I'll go ahead.
Discussion.
All right. Well, I didn't wanna jump the gun. I'm still concerned as to, like you mentioned, why we have so much dirt moving in there in four years?
Mm-hmm.
If this thing was done in fifteen.
Gonna build up behind it, just sew it in again.
He took the key.
Humble damage, soak it in.
See, the upper end where the bulkhead is, maybe we need to get a little more grass growing up at the upper end. You know, talk with the farmer who owns that property, and say, this is costing you guys money to keep. Boy, you know, I was, I was.
Then, at the upper end, in the upper end, physically, there's nothing, you know, in that first mile or so, as far, that really is particularly egregious.
Not that obvious.
Yeah, Rick's been there, but I.
I mean, it's not, that's a good point, is there something that's just dumping silt into the ditch? It doesn't appear to.
Is it possible, Rick, it's just so slow a water movement that everything just settles off?
Yeah, especially with the Beaver Dam in place. And, and it's not in the slope on the, the sun line if the Beaver Dam were on, so.
I'm disagreeing, maybe there's. That's where, would we get some, some grain of corn?
Oh, that's where they use corn.
We gotta find that, get rid of that, but it's.
Rick?
Thought, and what we just made the motion on, to get some depth, you know, hard and fast.
Verify where that bottom should be.
Well, we'd probably go to your number and then plus a foot.
Uh-huh.
Just to.
Just to have room for silting.
Yes.
And we go there with any, Rick, cleanout, we call for six inches to be overdug, so the initial siltation.
But then you have, what, yeah, you just have a, a hard and fast number, and a, and a depth and a grade.
I'm not guessing.
You're not guessing, and so, because, there again, having, part of the reason why I looked at the upper end of that ditch was what Rick just said. This was cleaned out within, you know, very recent history and memory. And what's questioning, why is this here again? Because there again, speaking, there's a couple of pretty decent sized tile outlets right up near that upper end that are underwater, all the time.
Can you guess when you might get to the Beaver Dam?
I'm, I'm not sure where it is.
Sure.
Like I say, I've heard of it.
No.
It's even the world low.
We started. No, it's not, no. There's one upstream that's blocking, yeah. Jason says they marked it real high, it just goes way out to the west, you can't see it.
Travis is half mile into it right now.
Okay. Our guy said they marked it last week, that and the bridge abutments.
Okay.
So, but you still won't be able to see it from the road. Now, our guy should talk to Travis, probably in the field.
And I can go do some more looking, see if I can get that Beaver Dam located.
But you have, are Jason's number?
Yes.
Okay, call him. He'll get you over.
Very good.
Say, been out there.
So you wanna try and trap them then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna be in contact to, uh, we don't have a huge list of people to trap beavers. Pretty short list, but, uh, uh, there's that one, and there's another one that needs immediate attention, so we'll see if we can't get that accomplished.
Okay.
Well, the other thing I'd, I'd like to say is, appreciate the fact that you called and asking for help as opposed to someone we just downstream a mile and a half digging.
Yeah.
That's the way we ask, and we appreciate you doing that, doing it this way, in my opinion. That way she doesn't have to figure out, how do I do this, how do we make it work, so we appreciate it very much.
Anything you want me in here, I'll, I'll be happy to show.
Like I said, there's a better way to skin a cat, let's do it that way.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'm asking the question, like Bruce, I have a fifteen mile wide back gas.
Yeah.
I'd like to figure it out.
Well, we appreciate it.
I sure do wanna do it the same.
No, that's a, that's a point. Yeah. Like I said, that's, that's why, about this, why are we having, this was cleaned, what's the problem? Let's figure it out, like Bruce said. Let's not do the same thing over. Okay, if you have any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Gary. What else you got for us?
DD thirty-three branch A, um, south. North here, but north of the pantry, what you call it.
Thank you.
Yeah. We've had a lot of repairs on it. Ron Thompson called in a lot. And so I went back, 'cause I wasn't sure if we were supposed to be keeping the old main functional or not. And in two thousand twelve, when we did the project, and I had noted on there that the original system will be included as part of the overall system, as long as it's functional.
As long as it's functional.
Uh, when do we determine it's not functional? I mean.
How much, I mean, are you spending a lot of money on it, are you spending nickel and dime in it, or?
Next question. I'd say four or five a year. And it's not a huge area.
Not that big, yeah. And this is before my time even, I think, I don't recall, remember this one. Is this, is this the one where we did the first part of it, and then you extended further?
Yeah.
Yeah, they put a, a majority, look at a map, where it goes up through, uh, a field, and then early, early soon after that project was completed, I think it was even a different contractor, did a little bit further to the northeast.
Yes.
Additional.
Would this be south of Virgil Williams area?
Yes. Well.
Close, it'd be.
Right in that area.
Right in that area, but it doesn't have anything to do with the one that we did.
No.
Two years ago.
No.
Three years.
One that's prior to that.
Yeah, different branch, but it's in that.
Yes.
Generation.
Yes, and I've seen some of where the old tile needed to be fixed. It, I think it bears keeping an eye on, I don't know if it's egregious at this point.
How, how close is the old main to the new main? Do they parallel each others?
Yes.
Yeah. With cross connections?
So you basically have to go in there and just bring everything over and dump it into the.
Yeah.
New main from one side. Or the other thing we've done in the past is like run an eight inch plastic connector, connecting line, just to tie those into.
Yeah.
And dump them in every so often.
Well, that, that would be tied into the new main anyway.
Yes, yes.
Right now.
Right now.
So what would you have to do differently if you abandoned it?
Either run a small plastic line just to collect the laterals.
Oh, yeah.
Or that, that's about it, right? That's about the simplest way, yeah.
Well, yeah, if there's anything that's dumping only into the old tile.
Yes, 'cause it'll come on one side.
What, what's it gonna, what would it cost to do something like that versus what it's costing to have the repairs that were chasing?
It'd be bad, 'cause you could probably plow, and now you need to find all those.
You'd have to locate it first.
Locate and find it, yeah.
A lot of this is in a couple of landowners' fields with old mains. So I think it's worth finding out, you know, if it's just, like Bruce said, if it's just habitual.
Well, every, every repair's fifteen hundred bucks at the minimum.
Right.
Very seldom are they less than that.
Yeah, they're usually.
But.
So there, yeah, four of them are six grand.
Yeah.
In a couple of years, that would pay for putting an eight inch. Yeah. I think it's worthwhile, like you said, Eric, talk to the landowners. Is it becoming a real nuisance to them, or is it not that big a deal?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're the ones that, no, they're the ones that call in the repairs typically, and, and, but I agree with everybody, if it's, 'cause there's not, you don't have to talk to fifteen different people.
Right.
Two or three at the most. And getting back to, yeah, if this old main is just pretty well done, and all you do is fix it.
Yeah.
Then it's time to hook the laterals into the new one and abandon it.
Yeah.
That's easy.
Did I give you any more direction?
No.
I don't think so.
It's just a lot of talk.
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to check with it, I know Ron Thompson very well, and he has the lion's share of the.
Well, tell him to come in and visit with us.
I mean, yeah, and say, hey, this is a concern, you know, this old main, you got this new system, the new system works wonderful.
Well, they aren't gonna be happy having a new, new main within the past few years, and they're still getting.
Bills.
Bills and grounded out, and, you know, it's the worst of worst.
And then holes that you.
And holes, yeah. So either way, we're gonna talk to him, see what he wants, what they'd like to do.
We don't wanna. Yeah, like you said, they were saying, you're just paying religiously into the, you know, your district fixing. Well, yeah, it's gonna be one more cost, but then we'll just get these laterals hooked up. I guess part of the, the investigation on that is, that's about all it takes. You need the laterals that go on the old main hooked into the new main.
There you go.
Yes, and that, you also gain knowledge of the people that own that, and or farm that, where those are. How many is it?
Yeah.
So then you have an idea what you're looking, what you're already getting.
The idea that we'd sure like to know what, how that tile is out there someday, 'cause we don't have any clue.
Put it, yeah, put it on the map.
Put it on a map, put it on, give it, so she can look back and say, well, in two thousand nineteen, or twenty, whatever it was, we abandoned this, these are the laterals, these are the loc, with phones, the location.
Mm-hmm.
I can't do it, but some of my kids could.
Yeah.
So.
What else you got?
Working on, uh, updating the order list, yeah, got it pretty much done. Um, I'll check if it, most of the time catching up mostly. And working on the eleven, so. Um, trying, I, obviously Dave, undermark was in, he's gonna file an objection.
Mm-hmm, told us.
So.
Now there's a couple of chapters.
I tried to get, to gather the total amount we all. Um, just work with Jan on it, get more specific, but.
Are bills all pretty much in? I mean, all of the.
I would say so, yeah.
All of the stuff we put in the ground, all of the labor, all of the rock, all of the.
Yes.
So we should be able to get pretty close on that, we should be able to get the engineering part of that done, so we just haven't come to a conclusion here pretty quick. And I guess if they have, the questions, we'll just have to sit down with them and listen, hear their objection, hear their, what, you know?
I know they, they were concerned about the interest. And as of right now, I have like eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars worth of that, plus twenty-nine thousand in interest. But that's not totally accurate, when you have to consider installment payments that still have to come in. Um, they're not figured into this number, I guess.
Drainage doesn't have a good accounting system available, even, how to handle all this. 'Cause there is interest accumulating on the project, because there's that warranty. How do you allow for that?
But some of them are already spoken for as paid, because they have some junk payments from the landowners on them, so figuring that is.
Difficult.
Harry.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know.
Um, I'm here in North Town, today's twenty-third, is their last day, but with the rain, I'm assuming that it isn't gonna mysteriously just get picked today, but.
Right.
I, you and I visited, we visited, and I left a message for King Construction. Told him that as soon as we saw anything, that you were gonna come stake it.
Yep.
They were gonna move equipment, he's just moving the equipment from south side of Fort Dodge, so he said, I'm not bringing it a long way. Um, so we're gonna get pipe moved over, as Dial said, he would either roll it or run a disc across there, so that it was a walk. Decent ground to work with. So all the places are, things are in place, hopefully, that we're
Oh, yeah.
Ready to start burying pipe and be done with it.
Yep. Weather nature shut the rain off.
Yeah.
Exactly, Dial said he'd get hold of us when they were, gave him a specific date, when they were gonna be in the field, and we'll be in the next day to stake it.
I keep driving out there, he probably thinks I'm stalking him.
So how does it start, are you picking?
No.
Not in, well, they have a, they have a while of it, but not in that field, so. But today was their date, twenty-third was when they were hopefully gonna, last day to pick, but I don't think that's gonna work with the rain, so.
Right, and Dial was saying, was saying that, too.
Well, be that as it may, probably this week.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you get a correspondence, response from King Construction?
I talked to Dave earlier in the week, but then I, the second time, he was out moving some equipment, and I told his secretary that we would be in contact with him for a part of the week when we found out where, when, and when the crew come to. Dial's still working it, he says, I'm trying to get him to go to the north end of that field and work south, so that, 'cause the south, we don't want him going down there, and we gotta wait for him to do the other half, but he said, if I can get him to do the north half, and, but that's just working with them, so, anyway.
He did say just like a day and a half or something, and he said that one time is all it would take him, but, yeah.
And he did get the, he did get the picture of the intake that Jen's put in on that, so.
Yes.
It's gonna have a little grass area, and then they'll, he'll put his, Dial's already talked to the NRCS to put the waterway through there, so he's got all that taken care of, so. It looks, it's gonna be good. Just a long time.
And we've met with Dial out there, too, as far as getting intakes on a hundred and eighty, so that's gonna happen. gonna happen. Um, yeah, everything's poised and ready, as far as I can tell.
Perfect.
Got anything else for us? While we're in drainage and while you're here and on DD-11 sub five.
Mm-hmm.
Seems to be the, what Trish just mentioned, the dollars and cents of it. Hopefully she can make sense of that, so we have actual numbers to, and I know it is confusing with the interest, but that seems to be, and the other thing, the contentious part, that being less than the reclassification, seems to be, Dave, you correct me if I'm wrong, that's his concern. It isn't particularly that number part of it, I mean, he wants to know, everybody wants to know the exact figures on it. The reclassification. You've done the reclassification with the commissioners.
Yep, we've had the hearing.
Yes.
It's approved.
Yes.
Yes.
And obviously, this is all drainage district protocol, it's all been followed.
Yep.
They have more of the say so, you're just there to guide them through the process, so we have this reclassification, that's the biggest contention that I've heard from David and a couple of other.
Didn't you say it was on the property that was, has been removed or?
Part of it.
Part of it?
It hasn't been removed from the district.
No, it hasn't been removed, it's just been reduced.
Reduced.
Which, Dave was stating to me this morning, you're setting precedents, well.
No, no.
No, this has been done this way on other projects, like DD-6, East of town, it was a significant area reduced because it was tiled out.
DD-3.
DD-3, yes.
We had a piece that would flow the end and we reduced that down to 25 percent.
Yeah, yeah. We've done it before.
Oh, yeah. That's what I told him this morning, if the precedence was set, was set on previous projects where this reduction was done, cause they've taken part of the water the other way. I said, no one gets out of the district, but they have the right to reduce levy or reduce benefit based on the tiling, so.
I mean, I don't know, anybody can file an objection to anything, but, you know, let's, let's get this resolved, I don't know what that would mean. Are you gonna do a re-classification? I mean.
I don't think so. Done. No, I think we listen to their objection, and if we think it requires some adjustment, then we do it.
Yeah, well, we had this previously, but obviously.
I mean, we have the authority to sit here and make the adjustment that day if we think it's warranted.
Yeah, we can overrule anybody.
There's a section in the code that talks about if there's errors in the reclassification, the board can order that looked at again, yeah. Uh, now you probably have to do the hearing again, cause everybody will be affected, but.
But all the time, the meter is still running.
Yeah.
The longer.
So, they're worried about the interest, they're worried about, and I'm not saying let's rush through it and get it done, let's get it done right.
Yeah, you're at the stage where people have the right to take this to court. That's, I don't think it any other way, that's, that's the right, so.
It's in the ground.
Yeah, it's in the ground, it's working, no one, no one argues as far as the quality of construction and the job it's doing.
It's just, who pays how much?
Exactly.
Well, and that gets back to the, the classification.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, we can listen to it, we can look at it, it's been done, it's been filed, we've had the hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I've mentioned to other landowners in the district that, you know, everything was followed, it's met with the commissioners, this is where this came from.
Yes.
The re-classification.
Yes.
They're objecting to that more than anything, seems to be.
Yeah.
We can, I guess, sort through that and move on.
Yeah.
About it. And then to get the dollar amounts nailed down to within, to answer any of those questions.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Anything else? Questions go out of drainage?
I'll make a motion to go out of drainage.
Second, any discussion? On your favor?
Aye.
Hold, Gary.
Thanks for any.
Yeah, thanks, Rick.
Did you notice my Instagram for us on the drone video?
Oh, I, Jason didn't send it with me, that's fine, we'll get it from Jason.
Okay.
Hey, Rick, I got a, I got a question for ya. Well, we've marked that beaver dam as the abutment, so he just gets a couple of days in the city where that'll, that'll get that.
He will.
He will, absolutely.
Well, I guess we're gonna be in Lindblom and Lindblom's doing.
Yeah, kind of being.
You are.
It runs parallel on the west side of.